It's now 10:00 AM. We will pay the budget to the West.
The budget for the West is...
...in the United States of America. In two republics which stands one nation, one ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is to approve our agenda. Are there any additions?
You just said on one addition, you mean about the other.
No, that is, that's prerogative. That was all on there. It's just what's written in.
Okay. I make the motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll support that. Motion by Stevens, supported by Anderson, to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
By aye, motion carries. Next on the agenda is the approval of our special meeting on Wednesday, June 2nd, 2021.
I make a motion to approve this special meeting minutes of Wednesday, June 2nd, 2021. Support.
Moved by Jennifer Anderson, supported by Colleen Stover, to approve our minutes of Wednesday, June 2nd, 2021. All in favor? By aye.
Aye.
All in favor? By aye, motion carries. Next on the agenda is our financial report.
At the end of the month, $418,700.43. You took in receipts of $96,429.28. And you made disbursements in the amount of $237,826.27. Leading us with an ending balance in the general fund of $277,303.44.
Make the motion for the financial report.
I'll support. Motion by Stevens, supported by Jennifer Anderson, to accept our financial report as submitted. All in favor? By, by saying aye.
Aye.
By aye, motion carries. There was no correspondence. Next is new business. First on the agenda is Mr. Gibson about our gypsy moth. Man up.
Okay, so basically you want to pitch your, your agenda here. 1998, I'm a resident, uh, can't speak for 41 years.
I'm gonna ask you to speak up a little loud. Or maybe closer to your...
Stand closer.
Or maybe shut head up or you'll...
Yeah.
Just for...
You wanna stand closer to the mic? Yeah, okay.
We wanna be, they, make sure everybody cares.
Okay, so...
That'll be, now it'll be, that'll be better.
So, maybe your own agenda, and just a little history of it. Now, I've been at the Castle membership for 41 years, lived on Church Road. Over that time, the last time we had a problem with gypsy moths, were back in 1998. It was pretty bad. And actually, this year, my area is worse than it was in 1998. I organized the, about 105 acres, 109 acres back in 1998, to have a spraying gun on our block. Basically, three quarters of a mile section. And we sprayed with a pesticide that no longer can be used, but it was effective. And it worked well. And now, last year, we started seeing recurrence. And so, I reached out to our local government, all the way to St. Clair. And St. Clair referred me to the extension unit. Didn't get anywhere, so back last fall, I did my own research. I called approved aerial sprayers. And I got a bid from an approved aerial sprayer to do work. And I also talked to Macomb County. Macomb County has their own sector that handles gypsy moth. And they actually go out to different townships, but I was getting ahead of myself. So anyways, I contacted this bond flying service. And had them all set up, had the neighbors all sign up. They came up with an agreeable price. And he applied for aerial spraying and licensing and everything. And I was doing the legwork of talking to the owners on our road, basically 105 acres. And I talked to the people that either could not afford it, or was not able to get a hold of down our street because they were in Florida or wherever they were at. And got that all done. And we were about ready to pull the trigger, 11th hour and 11th half hour. The guy calls me up and, because I asked him to give me paperwork that I could take from the adjacent owners to have them sign waiver saying it was okay for us to spray near their property. And he responded to me that, after checking with his insurance company, that the liability was too high and he could not, and he had to back out. And he says if the township or the government agency was to support it through them, he could do it. So I did talk to him tonight before it came to the meeting. And he's on board if the township or the county would like to get involved in supporting that for us. And the neighbors were willing to pay for it, the liability portion of it. Now, um, in talking to the, to Macomb County, because they told, they left the contact information to me, if, if I wanted to join them and spray our area, they would do our area. But they wanted $165 an acre.
Yikes. Wow.
Um, last year, in the fall, I was over, my brother lives over off of M19. And I saw the gypsy moth infection over there. And I pointed it out to him. My sister-in-law got a hold of the township. Township got a hold of Macomb County. And they came out and did egg mass count. And he says, you, you passed. And they did, a couple weeks ago, the township paid to have 54 acre spray to get rid of its, this problem over there, because it was bad over there too. It's just not local, you know, it's just, I drove around all the way over to our BP gas station there where the park is. I walked that whole length and got about four or five ticks, but no oak trees.
Oh.
There was no, you know, no damage to that area. I went back and forth between the roads and then I was looking for damage. You really can't see it unless you get in the woods if you have a massive amount of oaks. I have a lot of oaks. Last fall, I scraped off over two and a half gallons of egg masses off of 15 acres. Me and my grandchildren, they, I'd go out there and I'd scrape a whole bunch off. And then they'd come out, what about this one, grandpa? And so, I scraped off a lot. So I thought I had it under control. But in, around Christmas time, I cleared out, I put a pole barn up. And when I dropped about six big oak trees, about that big around, about 50 feet up in the air, I had egg masses, hundreds of them, up in the air. That, I said, oh boy. Scraping them off at the ground level didn't do any good. So, um, where I'm at right now is next year's coming. Last year, I found out when I was doing research, that there was like $250 million worth of grant money that didn't get used. Just need to apply for it. If you look at the literature that I emailed out, there is an agency right now, you have to file for it by October and everything submitted by December in order to be eligible for this grant. And part of that would be is having an extension unit come out and do egg mass counts this fall. And trust me, there's a lot of them. So that's basically where it's at. I have found, I have been spraying the base of my trunk's tree with a ant, carpet ant killer, a termite. And I go up about 10 feet, I call the company that makes the spray. And surprising enough, I wish I knew this in the spring. But if the insects crawl across it, just like ants crawl across it, they die within 10 feet.
What is the name of this product?
It's a bear, I can send you the information on it. Actually, I got the truth. Trust me, my neighbors have gone from home, four places, haven't been able to find the stock. The only place that was able to get it was Amazon.
Of course, Amazon has it.
Well, no, I originally bought this a few, I was experimenting with some, soap kills it.
Soap kills it?
Yeah. I scrape them off into soapy water, so a little bit of soap kills them on contact. But the termite spray...
Oh, yeah. Okay.
It's, it's called Carpenter Ant and Termite Killer Plus. And I spray about a 10 foot section of the trunk. And when the gypsy moth crawl up it, I get hundreds, if not, I don't say a couple hundred, every day.
Jeff, um, how do they determine, would they have to physically go out and, you know, do the count?
In the past, and when I talked to city of Macomb County, they come out to your facility and count the egg masses in the fall.
Okay.
To determine if you really have a major infestation. If you go down Church Road between St. Clair Highway and Division, just look at the trees along the road, you'll see that they're stripped. If you look at the road, you can see dots of where they've been smushed on the road. It's, it's pretty bad.
Well, those pictures you emailed with the trees?
Yeah.
The one I remember, the one was on 521 and then the other one was on 666. That's crazy.
Well, as of tonight, it's completely gone on that tree. And the problem is, and is that in a good year, you've got rain, well, we're in a drought, these trees will reproduce leaves for a second time. But with the drought going on, it's a good chance, and if you read the literature that I sent out, you'll lose about 10% of the trees. Now, we all know that ash, what the ash board has done, and what impact that's had on our roads. And you, if you could imagine, if we lost 10% of the oak trees along our major roads running, how much is it gonna cost to take those trees out? And nobody wants them dropping. So it's a safety issue on that end of the, of the oak trees.
I have a question. What company were you looking at to...
It's on the agenda there.
It's on their bond aerial.
Were they on that list that you emailed?
Yep.
All right, Mr. Bond.
I can, I can chime in. I probably received, Jeff Bond, St. Clair County Board Chairman, I received my first gypsy moth call probably 10 days ago. I just got out of the phone with the St. Clair County MSU Extension Director today, Jerry Johnson, talking about taking some samplings. I have some emails that I can forward to you. This year's spraying would be a waste of time, they're too far in bloom, too far gone. It's just not gonna happen.
What is our window of opportunity?
I'm sorry?
What is the window?
I'd have to forward the emails to you, there's a lot of information. But what they had suggested to do, exactly what you said, was to take some ramblings, some rant, some ramble, rambling.
Random.
Random, thank you. Samplings about it. Because they tend to be cyclical too. I mean, like you said, they were gone for a long time, they pop up for a period of time and then they're, then they're gone. And to really determine if they're gonna be an issue or not next year, um, we have, I've, I've probably had at least 20 phone calls on this issue, literally in the last 10 days. So we're in conversations about how to best address it and moving forward. I don't have a definitive answer for you right now, although I know that it's too late right now as we speak. But I'll give you my cards and then send me some emails and I can at least get you that information. And this is not just Castle Township, I mean, this is a statewide issue. Horrible up in Roscommon, so our, our, our MSU Extension Director's part of District 10, so he oversees here on San Wack. His goal is St. Clair, a couple other counties out there. So I've got, I've had him assembling some information to see what different places do. For example, in Roscommon, I think they actually have a millage, it's been so bad, a dedicated millage, which actually pays to do that. Because when you're talking about spraying these properties, you're not, this isn't, this isn't, you know, cheap stuff. Your $208,000 probably won't, you know, won't go that far.
Yeah.
And just trying to get a grasp on some additional grants or what potential. So, um, I know it sounds cliche, we're working on it, but literally, I just got this dropped in my lap 10 days ago and I can share some correspondence with you from MSU Extension.
Well, I've talked to a lot of people over the last eight months. And on my end of it, I mean, I have, I had it all set up, it's just liability. We had the homeowners, I know money's tight for everybody, but I tell you what, the homeowners are about ready to cut down all the trees, because they're sick of, you can't sit, if you, if we're in a heavily forested area, I can't sit on the back porch because their feces are pooping all over the place. And it's just raining. You listen to, during the day, you walk out there, it sounds like it's raining, but it's not. And back in 1998, next to your place, they completely cleaned the woods out. All the trees were, leaves were gone. So it's, it's, it's bad.
Down, down where my mom lived?
Yep.
Okay.
Right next to your house.
Right, I remember that, yeah.
Just completely, and I talked to your neighbor and he told me that it was eerie because all you heard was like raining, but there was not a cloud in the sky.
Yeah, I remember that. It looked like it was already fall.
Yep. Now, the best time for spraying is the first of May. And if you read the literature and information I sent off to you, is they talk about two applications instead of one. And I also enclose in the agenda, the type of spray they're using. It's basically a bacteria spray. It's biodegradable, it's safe for animals, you know, horses or dogs or anybody that's outside that gets it on. It's a natural occurring bacteria, it's in the ground. But you gotta spray the first part of May, the last, the latest you can spray is the first week of June. Have any impact to it. So, that's it. All I'm asking for is...
Some support from...
Support, if we can get, if we can get this grant request put in, that'd be great.
Jeff, would your, would somebody...
So we have capacity at the county to write countywide grants to do those types of things. Because it's just, isn't a Castle Township issue.
So you would write a grant?
And I, and I literally just found, literally 10 days ago was the last, first time I've gotten calls. And I've had three different videos, to your point, people, their houses, you know, all their other stuff. And so, I think what the course of action's going to be, looking at taking in inventory, literally, I was just on the phone with Jerry Johnson when I was sitting here in the parking lot, to get that inventory, to see where they're gonna be at and, you know, kind of get a plan of action for, for next year.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. So, very patient.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, I was gonna say, make sure he asks your...
I can send.
Okay, Jeff, for her.
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna let me and Casey start it out and then I'm gonna jump in.
Then Casey, you are...
Yeah, you want me to go over here?
Unless you've got a big booming voice.
I can talk pretty loud. Won't be on camera there though. I'll say, I'll go over there. I'm Dan Casey, I'm with Economic Development Alliance.
Okay.
It's my first time being in front of the board, so this is great. You know, I've been here 10 years and I finally made it to Castle Township.
Yeah.
Yeah. So first, a little bit about the Economic Development Alliance, because I'm sure not all of you really know who we are and what we do. We're the organization that does economic development on behalf of the county. We're not a county agency, we're not a government agency, we're a nonprofit 501(c)(6) membership based. So we have companies, we have communities that are members. And this, it's actually the most common model in Michigan for economic development for counties. The other model is you have government-based agencies, which in this county, I don't know years ago, you guys decided not to go that way. So we've been around since 1952. So we're the people that are attracting new companies to come to the area. We work with existing companies to help them with their expansions, to find people, employees, things like that, job training, solve business problems. We're involved in community development work, so we're doing infill kind of work in downtowns. Generally speaking, they're in downtowns. We manage a business incubator. And we have a countywide virtual incubator program, so any startup companies can come to us for help. And we have people that work with them, counsel them, we have grant funds and other things that we can put into, invest into businesses. So we do all of that work and we market the county and help with it. Now, the reason that we're here today is, if you'd asked me this question two years ago, about where do we put the next big manufacturing plant that might come our way? It was gonna go most likely on the St. Clair Industrial Park property. Because that is a city-owned piece of property that was prepared for development years ago. The city put a lot of money into it, state helped, they put some money into it. And so we've been marketing it for a number of years. And we came really close on several different projects, but just couldn't quite land somebody. Well, we finally did. Early this year, we landed Magna International in that park, and they're building a nice big building, $112 million investment, lots of jobs. But it's gonna take the biggest piece of property that we have in the county that had infrastructure, water, sewer, and roads. And it was development-ready, basically. So it was pretty easy for Magna to come in, cut down corn, and start doing their geotech and other work that they had to do on the site. I mean, they could do it right away. So with, knowing that that was coming off the table, we started working with the county and some communities to identify pieces of property where we could do another industrial park, or at least have a big parcel that we could begin working to put the infrastructure in place, you know, working with the property owners. So that when the next big project came along, we'd have something we could offer them. Now, the sad thing is, in the last couple of months, we've had to pass up on about six big projects that came to the state of Michigan, because we didn't have a site that was big enough to accommodate them. You're talking about 100 acres, 150 acres, we had one project that was 300 to 500 acres, right? Those aren't easy to come by in the state of Michigan, you know, where you have the water and sewer that's associated with it. So anyway, we began working on it, we tried to identify some sites. We did find a couple, but that led us to talking about Marine City Highway. Because first of all, we also have a lack of people available to work, so we have a labor force issue. So if you're located in the southern part of the county, you're closer to Macomb County and the bigger population base in metro Detroit. It's easier to attract a company to go there, because they have a stronger sense of whether they can hire people, right? Whether people will drive to that location. So we started looking at Marine City Highway. And there's some water and sewer that was already existing there. And most importantly, there were some big blocks of land available on that corridor, right? Where you could get 200, 400 acres, all settlers, farms, and so forth. Anyway, so with that, another thing that happened beyond that was that we had the company that, it's Sauvay Industries, that owns the corner of Town Line and Marine City Highway in Castle Township. They came to us and said, we'd like to develop our property, but we're not really sure where to go, what to do with it, in terms of uses. And so, we met with them, talking about what we saw happening in the market. And quite honestly, the opportunity right now is medical office space because of the hospitals that are being built over there. And so that interested them right away. That's something that's permitted on that site, based on the current zoning. But they also were interested in some residential and some other things. So we're working with them, I'll just leave it at that. But one of the concerns they have is that they need water and sewer. And so they wanted to know, could we bring it out of Macomb County? That was their initial thought. Well, we know we can bring it from Ira Township as well, right? Is the Ira Township system, does it have enough capacity to service that development as well as other future developments up and down the corridor? So that began to open up a, or ask, us to ask a lot of questions about where should we invest money? And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff and he's gonna talk a little bit about the rest of the conversation.
Yeah, so the county just received some substantial money, roughly $31 million in COVID relief money. And we are looking heavily at infrastructure. Because what Dan fails to tell you, one of these companies, 3.2 billion, one was 1.3 billion, one's 500 million. So when you talk about this new Magna plant that's coming into St. Clair, I don't know if you guys have been by it at all, 370,000 square foot in phase one. Even with abatements and everything, that still produces 544,000 in new tax dollars per year. So they're going to go to phase two, they're going to go to phase three. You're talking about, you know, 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars in new revenue, 350 jobs, 350 good paying jobs. I don't know how many people in here drive to Macomb County, my wife does. Why? Because they pay more money. You go where the jobs are at. 40% of our people that are in the, in the, yeah, call it livable wages, do not work in St. Clair County, they travel outside of. 30% or so, low 30s, go to Macomb County. That's just, those are facts, those are, that's the truth, right? So, you know, to be able to provide good jobs for, you know, as my selfless county board chairman, jobs in tax space, that's what, that's what we chase, that's what we go after, right? So when we have to start turning down these opportunities for these larger plants, that pains me to think that we don't have a dog in our flock. And when you sit with these companies, to echo what Dan said, proximity of the Macomb County workforce, they're not going to KPEC, okay? It's just a reality of, you just can't get the people. They, they wanna be as close as they can to 94, they'll work their way back, close as they can to the 90, you know, interchange. You sit in the rooms with these guys, they argue about, do they get off at St. Clair or do they get off at Marysville, because it adds two miles to shipping and time. I don't know if anybody's worked in the world of automotive here, okay? Right? Times, money is that. So, so when you get into these things, you know, we don't really think about it, but when you're sitting in these rooms with us, it reaffirms, you know, it reaffirms those types of things. So we had talked about taking this money and looking at what probably be arguably the, you know, largest infrastructure investment we've ever seen in St. Clair County. And when I, when I farm this out to all our people, countywide, 26 mile road comes up. Where do you think is the next going, where is the next major thoroughfare in St. Clair County that could potentially happen? And I, I've had zero people argue with me to say that it's not that 26 mile road. Because when you talk about large tracts of land, ability to water and sewer, hey, St. Clair, you know, Fredmore Highway, right? Great, there's no water and sewer. It's not even close, you think, it's not gonna happen for a long time out there. So, you know, the county is, is, is looking at, and actually, we're going out for requests or proposals, but the first thing we wanna ask this board, you don't have to answer it tonight, but you gotta answer it in the near future. Are you willing to accept some commercial industrial development along that corridor? Because we cannot go out, we're talking, this is 75 million dollars kind of stuff. None of the townships have the ability or capacity to be able to put that kind of money in. We're also looking at setting up a perpetuating fund to, we're just not gonna go out and put 75 million out and not have a tax capture or repayment method. So that's where you have the ability to set up some business districts, would be like a TIF district, so the monies could come back or recapture, to put that back out on the street, you know, at a later date. And so far, we've talked to Contra Ville, we talked to Ira, we've talked to China, your last one we're giving in front of. Because if somebody doesn't want to do it, it does not make sense for the county to go out and invest that kind of money. There's just, the economies of scale doesn't, doesn't work, right? And when you talk, another piece you forget about is what the wetlands issue. So it's even a bigger issue, like in St. Clair, when we did the last plant, there was, there was no wetlands issues on that. It had one acre that there was a credit that was already set up. Farmlands, big, large tracts of farmland work really, really well for these developments. Because if you gotta come in, in this, this Magna, so I'll go back to Magna, they had 10 and a half months from the time they acquired that property till they have to be up and running production, full flum. You're talking building a 370,000 square foot building, moving in 400 robots, staffing, and being in production. And they'll hit those targets. They, they don't come out and, they basically, they, here's a building, we are going... They, they don't come out and, basically, they, here's a building, we are going to build. Where, where can we put this building potentially in St. Clair County? That's, that's reality of it. And what we're seeing in the last inquiries we've had, are all the EV stuff, a lot of the, you know, a lot of the battery companies, a lot of electrification, it's the way that's going, whether you like it or hate it or whatever, I'm not going to argue with you, but that's where this industry is going. Look at my industry guy right here. So those are the types of things, if you're, we're, you know, going to get, get stabbed at this stuff, it's going to be automotive, it's going to be that. I'm not going to say you're not going to have some residential growth over there, you know, because you, you'll have the ability to do that type of stuff. But at the end of the day, the big money, the big users, when a billion-dollar plant shows up in your backyard, and you're going to do tax recapture and stuff, those are, those are the kind of home runs that you, that you need to hit. And this is a long-term play, this is not, it took 20, it took 20, it took 20 years for that plan at St. Clair to, to move, right? But if, if we don't prepare ourselves for the future, you know, are we, are we going to accept no growth, no, you know, and I'm not talking about crazy out of control, you know, I mean, but can we get five or six large companies along 26 mile roads, you know, and provide thou, you know, thousands of jobs, with paying jobs for the residents here in St. Clair County? I think, I know, I know any people would, be able to live in this community and not have to drive to somewhere, man, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a dream. So what we're really asking, just philosophically, would you, we're 30,000 miles, I cannot even jump into the weeds with you on, you know, this, 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 but if, if the, if the township's willing to consider that, because the next piece of it, we've got requests for proposals that we're going to put out, actually, Dan Casey, Dave Struck, Kurt Weston, our rural commission director, Bill Hazelton, and your plan, and Steve Kasson, that's the group that I kind of put together to write the request for proposal, to study the entire corridor. We talk about study, we're going to look at water and sewer capacity, you know, road improvements, just, just the whole overall comprehensive thing to that cor, to that corridor.
Zoning.
Zoning, you know, consistency, you know, all that stuff.
From one community to the next, across the road from each other. You know, you want the setbacks, sorry to butt in, but.
No, no, you know, a lot better than that.
You want the setbacks, because, you know, 26 mile road is the dividing line, right? So you've got communities on both sides. You want to make sure that your setbacks aren't 100 feet, and their setbacks are 50 feet.
Right.
That's not going to look right. So everybody's got to have kind of a common playbook for development along that corridor, at least the basic stuff. Basic look, landscaping plans, are you going to require berm's or not require berm's, what's the setback going to be, what's the zoning going to look like from one community to the next? Because you don't want to transition from industrial to, you know, single-family or estate homes right next to each other, you're going to transition into that, right? But when you're dealing with another community, they might have a different idea for what they want to do on their side of the road. So that's the purpose of the study, is to look at all of those things, and I think most importantly, though, is to look at the, the engineering side of this, to look at the water and sewer, where does it currently exist in the corridor, what's the available capacity, can it be extended without spending a ton of money? For example, we've, we've looked at the possibility of having to put in a water, a new water plant along the corridor, possibly somewhere in the middle, just because of, we believe there's going to be a lack of capacity in that part of the corridor. We've got water and sewer at both ends, right? Ira's got it, Marine City's got it at the other end of the corridor, and so we've got to look at the middle part of it as well. So that's the purpose of the study, is to look at all those things.
You're fortunate Steve is a planner for three of the communities. I actually dealt with Steve at Macomb County years ago, and you've got, and I'm not, you hear, you've got, you've got an excellent guy working on it, for sure. So really, today, just, you know, as a philosophical, it's something that the township would embrace development, because some areas in St. Clair County just don't want it. I just, I just want, you know, hey, we don't want it, we want nothing, that's fine, we'll go, you know, look at other areas that would be willing to, you know, take and embrace it, and so.
Well, we're up to our five-year review on our master plan this year, so we're waiting actually for census data to come out before.
Can we do your master plan?
What's that?
Do you guys use Metro Plan?
No, we use.
We're making Steve.
Oh, you Steve, okay.
And he's part of the, you know, he's, trust me, he's the first guy called, you're sitting on his, what do you want to be on there?
The corridor's always been under consideration for what may happen in that corridor. There's an openness.
And I don't think, if you talk to any people, I'm talking countywide, that nobody does not not think that 26 is not the next.
Next place to go.
Place, or, you know, yeah.
I, I think, too, I want to comment real quick on one other thing. The hospitals that are going there, they don't typically build in suburban areas, they go on the fringes where they see development coming next. So they do a lot of studies, and they, they know what they're doing when they place these things. And the fact that you've got Ascension, and you've got Beaumont going there, and you have McLaren already there, tells me they've all done their homework, and they see population grow, people moving to that area, single-family homes, apartments, things like that being built. So even though we're talking about industrial and so forth, we've already begun to see that happen in Algenack, in Ira Township, and, and a little bit in Clay Township. So I would, if I were you, I would be expecting, somebody's going to come along and buy a big piece of property, and they're going to sit on it until they think the market's right, and then they're going to come to you, and they're going to want to put in a subdivision, right? So it, it could be five years from now, could even be 10 years, but it could also be tomorrow. So we don't know, but we, what we do know is that growth is coming, Macomb County's already planning for it.
We, we met with Candace Milner, her staff, and 26 is their next big hub, too.
Yeah.
We're even going to look at.
All the way across.
All the way across, yeah. We're, we're even going to look at, I don't know if it can happen, but they're part of the Detroit Water System, but there's an interceptor that runs over there at the time. We're going to look at any and every possibility that, that exists, can you partner up with them, can't you? And like I said, they're, they're, they're further ahead than we are in the, in the process, but yeah, they're, they're doing a big 26 mile road improvement over there, too, so.
Any questions? Well, if no, we'll consider what you said, it's very interesting, very interesting.
Let me know in the next 30 days if you're considering it, or if you say, no, it's horrible, because if it does, then we're going somewhere else, just being brutally honest, you know?
Well, you'll go with them.
Am I allowed to ask a question? Years ago, they had talked about widening 26 all the way from Oakland County Pontiac area all the way down. And then with all the bridges and things failing, the money went elsewhere. Are they still talking about widening 26 mile to handle this traffic?
Yes, they already put it in some of the federal, you got your long-term strategic plans, you know, and if, but if they know the county's putting those kinds of investments in, they know additional growth, they know, to get out ahead of it, but our rural, our rural commission's been part of all of them.
And I know this isn't part of St. Clair County when you're talking Lenox, but they're expanding the trailer park, and like you said, they were opening Beaumont, and then they have the stores, so that's going to be one big traffic jam.
Two more hospitals, going to McLaren, and Ascension.
Ascension, Ascension is kind of, it's not really to replace River District, but River District is so remote, it's affiliated with that.
Like you said, they, they, I think, they tend to think they're a little smarter than I am, that they're building hospitals, saying, oh, something's coming, and they just don't build them because there's nothing going on.
Traffic is definitely feeling the crunch. It's, it's got to be addressed already, let alone before more expansion.
And this is a long, you know, what we're talking about here is, you know, these things take a while, this isn't overnight stuff, you know? But it's just the reality of, there's three pieces that, we have, we have 0-100 acre parcels, the largest we can put together in Marysville. Well, the school district, Ira owns 60, not, in Ira Township, Anchor Bay Schools has 60 acres, that's ready to go.
If they'll sell it.
Counter, counter, and counter.
If they'll sell it.
Marysville has 73 acres, and if you go up Range Road, it's located, Cuddle and 18th, it's ready to go, they're going through site planning. And then Grace Performance has, and you've got to remember, we're talking water, sewer, big power, you know, and you know, so, I mean, everybody's got 400 acres of KPEC they want to sell, it's right. And you know, you've got, you know, the other stuff that goes along with it. We, we sit in rooms all the time, and where's the cluster, and, you know, at the end of the day, the customer is the one that drives it, Magna, the proximity of, you know, Macomb, Macomb County workforce, you know, for them, when you've got to bring up a lot of the engineering types and, you know, that stuff.
Honestly, that's a lot of the traffic, is people from this area driving to work and going 26 mile to 94 to get.
Over 40% of our, or 40% of our residents, yeah, 30% plus go to Macomb.
And when the schools reopen, there's going to be a lot of kids from that trailer park going to Anchor Bay, and that's such a dangerous intersection, and I know they're working on it, but there was a fatality, what, three days ago? Yeah.
County line and.
No, it's busy.
Townships.
It was just, it was just.
There is a lot, yeah.
Well, Jeff, yes, well, I'm sorry.
There was an agreement between St. Clair County and Macomb County for some type of an expansion at that intersection. I remember, there's a letter somewhere in our files that was addressed to.
I had to check with the rural commission, because I don't need to assert that issue, but they're.
But I was thinking, just based on my memory, that it was supposed to be happening within, like, the next three years.
No, they were going to put a light, left turn light, and change the lighting, you know, the traffic lights, they're the traffic, it says.
Yeah.
I think on the Macomb side, it's supposed to be five lanes up to the light, but then normally, it would transition, it would go through the light onto our side, and then you would taper it out.
Taper down.
But I don't think that's the plan, I think what I've heard on our side is three lanes, one center turn lane and the two existing lanes. So we still have some work to do, but whatever happens with.
We're 30,000 mile in this thing right now, actually, just trying to, just trying to see if people are even interested in, you know, moving forward.
Jeff, I skip Macomb County altogether, and I go right to Oakland County, right, so.
You're fine?
Yeah, I work in Auburn Hills, so.
Oh, man, that was my buddy, I don't know how you guys do it every day.
In the morning, it's not bad, I take 94 and a 59 mile road, coming home a little bit.
Mr. Bone, while, while we have your attention, and so we don't keep you for the whole darn meeting, there's just one more issue I want to tag on to this. We have some residents here from the township that are also interested. As we're talking about the future, especially here in Casco Township, we were wondering if you could give us just a short update and a little bit of hope about broadband connection at our end.
Yes, so broadband was, so we do our list of Blue Meat Green priorities, yada, 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 and that scored out number two on the list of priorities. What happens when that happens, time, money, and resources going in. RISA has just recently signed RISA, which is our, our.
Region.
Intermediate. Everything's in that, right, 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 school, intermediate school district. They have served, they have signed a public-private partnership agreement with a broadband provider that is based in St. Clair Township. They just received substantial grant monies to go to work on putting in underserved areas, which obviously, you guys, Contra Ville's another one, you know, a lot of these things. And we know we have to, I mean, you are just not, you are a competitive disadvantage, let's talk about economic development. And we, we actually, I've had some issues with some of the other township supervisors in rural areas when we were doing some other things to expedite some 5G stuff, and they weren't happy with my position on some of the, some of the zoning and stuff. And it was basically to help expedite technology and get it in place quick, right? And how do you, how do you sell a house if your cell phone doesn't work, or you don't have internet?
Yeah, I can't wait for the seven parcels on Springborn Road and three on, on Meldrum Road that just sold. I can't wait for them to discover there's no internet.
Yeah, no, so, so how do you even competitively to recruit people to do anything? And I mean, you have to, you have to be up on it. There's going to be a lot of, we're already seeing a lot of infrastructure money coming into that and the broadband. That is really being, though, RISA is actually the one that's spearheading it, because RISA has connectivity to.
And all the schools.
All, all the schools and many of the public buildings in the county are connected through their fiber. All the schools have fiber.
Yeah, you just hired away East China's technical director.
Well, I'm talking countywide, I'm just not talking St. Clair, so RISA serves.
All countywide?
Yeah, countywide, RISA has a fiber network that serves. So they have capacity in those lines to be able to lease some space. And you need to, the public-private partner piece, in this, this is a throw-down, AT&amp;T, Comcast, the world, there's not enough people to hook up out here, so they're, you're not getting it at the end of the day, right? Period. So when the RISA partnering up with these, they're able to put the backbone in to offer services for, for a lower cost. Now, you run into always the argument, where does the private sector compete with the public sector, too? You know, I mean, because RISA's a tax-funded entity, so they're getting grant monies to do this, AT&amp;T does not get those, those monies. But still, in the same token, for us, we need to, we need to put that infrastructure in, because the competitive disadvantage that that puts us in is, it's, it's crazy, you know, you just, you can't compete. Like you said, if your cell phone doesn't work, and you have no internet, what's your house worth? It's not worth anything to my family, my two kids.
Yeah, I'm just hoping they don't find out till I sell.
So, so they are very well aware of it, and they have been receiving, you're going to see, you know, some, some more things happen.
I'll make, I'll, I'll take it back, I sit on the county's broadband.
Oh, good, just the band one.
I'll, I'll take it back and make them aware.
Yes.
That it's, we've got a map that shows all the areas that don't have high-speed internet, and all, and all the areas that have marginal internet service or broadband capability. So we, we know where the weaknesses are. The biggest problem is finding the money to fix the problem. And Contra Ville's a good example, there's a, a two-mile stretch in Contra Ville that doesn't have broadband. And so we were able to work with a provider who typically does more of the rural areas, and they came in, and they were going to get some grant money that would help to subsidize the cost a little bit, but they needed a certain percentage of the people in that two-mile stretch to sign up. So what they did is they surveyed all those people to find out, they could only get like 20% of the people to sign up. That's it.
They had, they had an opportunity to get it done over there, and the people that knocked on it.
Is that why we have it on Meishner, and it's not on the other roads? I mean, we've got Comcast.
It just stops, I mean, it's like the gas, you know, but we, we added houses on, on various roads, and then we put in petitions, and when they thought we had enough houses per mile, and we keep saying, you know, our, our zoning, this is a rural area, this is agricultural area, the, the biggest, or the smallest you're going to get is 200 feet of frontage and five acres. That's what it's going to be, unless they change the zoning, and of course, there's, that's just not enough houses. But finally, every once in a while, the gas company will go, okay, you've got to pay your $7,000 or $5,000, hook up, and we'll bring it down. But then it, it just stops.
Well, yeah, I voted gas to gas, too, because I have 660 frontage.
Yeah, me, too.
And it was, it was, I don't know, totally ridiculous, the amount, I'd never make it back. I'm better off with propane.
Well, you know, but that, but that's it.
But that's different than internet. But that's, yeah, but if you, if you had to have $40,000 to do it, would you disagree? Would have recovered it from the savings, like, and get natural gas pretty quickly, actually? I pay $1,000.
But, you know, yes, and this gentleman has.
I was going to say, I just have a question for, for Dan. There was, I, I thought there was a, I don't know what the word is, I want, a survey that you guys were doing, that the county was doing, St. Clair County was doing, with, in conjunction with Connected Michigan? Because it seems like I remember filling it out like six or eight months ago. Was, was that taken in? I mean, has that led to anything at all?
So the, the survey is now closed, I believe?
Yeah, I think it is, I don't see it any longer on, you know, Connected Michigan's site.
Unfortunately, I missed the last broadband committee meeting, so I don't know if they went over the results of it, but I don't think they did.
Okay.
So I think that's coming. But yeah, it, it was out there, I know that the participation rate wasn't great on the municipal side, so I don't know how good the data is going to be, but.
San, Sanlak County was having the same problem, they couldn't get people to respond.
We, we have to get broadband, and going back, if we're spending all this money to, you know.
And the kids, well, at home, the kids need it at home.
You just, you're a competitive disadvantage, I go back, we're trying to recruit, billion, I'm talking billion-dollar companies with a B, and by the way, we don't have internet.
Right.
I'll tell you how well that works. Yeah, don't.
How well those robots work.
Schools assume that children have access to.
Schools assume that children have access to that. You know, there's projects and homework, and all, they assume. And what do the kids do when you don't? Well, take your kids to the library, where you could do that for a year.
The further you get, you get up in the Sanlack County area, you hear those.
Same stories, yeah.
You know, there's actually a, a big trend that's, that's resulting because of COVID, which is people working from home.
Yeah.
It doesn't work for me.
Right, so that puts us at a competitive disadvantage too. There's actually a, a company on the east coast, I don't remember if it's Delaware, I think it is, but anyway, they're on the east coast. They're literally paying people that live in the Midwest to work for them from home. And they're paying them the kind of big wages that they would pay them as if they were going into the office. But obviously, that doesn't work if you don't have internet access or good access, right? I mean, I can't tell you how many Zoom calls I've been on where somebody had port or connection.
Last call I took, I was up in the attic, you know, hoping to get one bar, because that's all I have.
But look at the one meeting where you had to have us on speakerphone because you couldn't connect that.
Yeah, it's, it's kinda like the Flintstones around here, you know? So, if you could put in a good word for us, we're being very patient about it, but I just, I, I don't wanna be there the day that those people call for Comcast.
And they say, wow. Because they never thought to ask, because they're coming from Sterling Heights, and they're coming from Rose Point, whatever, and of course.
Well, first time a farmer puts manure on the field.
I would make the pitch.
Yeah, you go, what's that smell?
Yeah, it's gonna be very touchy.
I, I guess I would make the pitch that if we're doing water and sewer, we work along the corridor, we should be putting broadband along the corridor while we're doing it. Or partnering with someone else to do it, because a lot of the expense is just opening up the ditch or the holes.
Well, it is being turned now, I think nationwide, as the fourth utility. You know, you got electricity, sewer, water, and now it's broadband. It never was telephone, but now broadband is a fourth utility. You gotta have it, you know?
Well, so keep us in your good thoughts, and move us along as quickly as you can. I can't get my, I can't get my children to come and stay for more than a day. They have to go up to Dunkin' Donuts, because they work online. It just is not working for us. So, thank you very much for your time, and thank you for giving us a lot, a lot to think about. The last time, the last time we had a discussion similar to this, it was three supervisors ago, and we were offered the opportunity to consider having the county jail in Casco Township. And I don't even think that made it to the township board.
I've been on the board seventeen years, and I wasn't part of that conversation.
Yeah, it stopped right in the supervisor's office and never made it to the board.
Yeah, it kind of be a while ago, because I've been here 32 years, and that jail was there when I bought the house.
Well, I was on the board when it didn't make the board table, so.
And if you ever want just updates, county updates, whatever, and I'd be more than happy to come in and just talk to you.
Well, it's good to see you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. All right.
The major thoroughfare.
Oh, I, I sat on a commission up in Marine City, and it, it was, it had to be about 20 years ago, when they actually, they put shoulders on our part of 26 mile road from Church Road down to King Road, and they put a stop sign at Indian Trail, or is it a light? There's a light at Indian Trail. So, even back then, they were thinking about it, and they had been, and we had an economic development committee here in Casco Township, but then it kind of fell to the wayside because the county was not going in that economic development corporation mode, so we didn't do that. But that was a good 20, 25 years ago.
It looked like we're a hot prospect, because.
I always thought, you know what, I always thought that we were simply because of our location near I-94. I just envisioned truck traffic in and out, in and out, in and out.
And also, we'll have the ability here as a township to directly influence how, you know, probably years from now before, a lot of this will be in place, but we'll have to say, hey, you know, industrial corridor, maybe this area for more commercial or residential, but we.
We've thought, we've talked about at different master planning sessions, about that corridor moving, and moving east.
It's a matter of time, you know, it's just a matter of time. I, I recall the rural-like setting between Ypsilanti and Ann Arbor and a little street called Washtenaw. And I remember when it was open fields, and now you can't stick a pencil between the businesses.
That was true when you'd go from Baltimore up here.
Well, that's true.
So, so thanks. For so many years when I grew up there.
Yeah, the, the Michigan population in the last four years or so that has been stagnant, it actually even decreased. However, and I think I may have talked this before, but there's real concern with this climate change in different areas of the country. You could, a lot of people could escape the area of the country with the most stable weather and abundant fresh water in the Great Lakes region.
Detroit's still the center of the auto industry. I mean, they, all the high-tech folks, Toyota built their research center here. And because this is where the skills are, and this is the center of that activity, maybe not the big plants, but all the technology that goes with the, and that's what a car is now.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Dozens of chips.
Oh, yeah, it's, of all, the one thing about the auto industry is truly a global industry. You cannot, I cannot see how someone could operate in depth without, with just a very nationalistic view. If you're not international in the auto industry, you're not gonna make it.
You're not gonna make it. Well, boys, you're giving us a lot to think about, isn't it?
All right. I'm with business and Anne. Next on our agenda is to approve our MTA dues.
So who?
I'll support it.
Okay, the amount of our dues are $3,258.81. Motion by Stevens?
No, by.
Goldston, I'm sorry. Motion by Goldston is supported by Mr. Stevens.
The Land Management Organization, they have townships and the information they provide and the accessibility to their people.
They really do help.
I use them like every day, whether it's the.
Just the publication, just the, they all get it.
I have them, they give us some, yeah, right. This will be a roll call vote.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Patty.
Yes.
Jennifer, yes. Honey.
Yes. All votes are yes, motion carries. Next. You asked me to look into the pay raises for the commissioners, for the planning commission and zoning board. I called all the different.
Can you guys hear us?
Can you hear me? Yeah. I called all of the, I called China, I called East China, and I called Ira. The only one that was different from us, that was, all of them were lower than us, except for China. China's chair was, so I came up with these amounts. All right. And Ira, they paid their chair $30, their secretary's, for a planning commission is $30, and the members are $30. For CPA, they paid $30. For the chair, secretary, $30, and the members, $30. In East China, for planning commission, the chair and secretary are $30, and members 25. In East China, they paid the CPA $30 for the chair and $30 for the secretary, and their members 25. In China, the chair is 40, the secretary is 40, and the members are 35. They do not have a supporting secretary, just that. CPA, the, the chair is 35, the secretary is 35, and the members is 35. So, it's up to you guys. You want to check on it?
Well, yeah, here, it says chairman's $30, secretary's $50. Chairman doesn't know, nor has the board. My partner here right now, he, he's the one who's paying. He's the one who's, he wants to earn more. I would flock around the best.
But I don't want him to get, well, up to you guys.
So, for the record, on the zoning board, I think we had $1.5, it's maybe fifteen years old. But nobody has ever asked for, in the 20 years that I've been on the board, or zoning. Yeah, it's not, it's a community service, I think most of all of it, you know, it's a community service. Pardon?
I mean, it goes to you people to get.
And people have to know, there's sometimes there for hours.
The planning commission is quite a big asset, it goes on how long it's gonna go out.
So, what are they currently making?
Pardon?
What are we currently paying them?
It's like $5 for each one until we're asking.
Right.
So, the members pay $30, the chair $35.
What percentage of a raise is that, though?
I think.
Well, I mean, we shouldn't, they shouldn't be up above what the standard raises at. Everybody gets in their jobs. You know what I mean? It can't be a 10% raise, that's not right.
They're not being paid for hours, and they're not paying for hours. They could be putting three hours in and getting paid $30.
There's never been a raise for over a decade, I don't think, on either the zoning board or the planning commission.
Well, I don't think we would get one if we're already the highest paid, and now we're gonna go above that more. I'm just saying.
Well, let me put it this way. I've been here since 1994, and they've never done a raise.
Because they were probably overpaid. If everybody else is still lower than us, then that means we were overpaid all this time. I don't care, you guys can give it to them, I don't care. I'm just saying we should think about everything.
We never.
We're in the minutes with the zoning board.
Instead of just calling around and saying, well, we're gonna stay above everybody, so.
We're in the same.
There are already a question regarding the secretary doing less work than the chair.
We're actually, members 35 are the same. Chair, $40 would be kind of, you know. The thing is, it's hard to get people to sit on these committees. I can't get anybody to sit on them. When somebody gets off of it, I can't get anybody to replace them.
And I've been on both of them and doing like research, you know, going to the, the different sites, and it's, it's a lot of time, and to ask someone to do that and say $30, and none of them complain.
No, they're not asking for it. It's, the, the board members said to look into it, so I'm looking. Maybe these members give, you know, more perks over it. I just checked them, and.
Well, then just look into the secretary getting more than the chair, because the gentleman there, the coroner, just said, they do more work, so.
No, what, I'm, no, no, I'm saying on the planning commission.
On the planning commission.
So, planning commission, the secretary right now does not give much work, because the chairman, he's the one who's working with our planner. He's the one calling up applicants today. So, the chairman is far more interactive. With the planning commission, we're needed a recording secretary. Okay, the secretary.
So, right now, you're doing work, and I'll just want to clarify something. In the planning commission, usually they get a pocket quite thick to review for site plans. It takes a long time, whether you are getting paid for it or not, which you really are. You have to go through that, and then you have to go through the documents, the zoning documents, and the ordinances in order to review that plan. I mean, you need, sometimes for a long time, to figure out what you're gonna, what changes you're gonna ask for and how you're gonna protect the township. So, it's not like it's an insignificant, particularly the planning commission. And sometimes they go out and have to see the site, see what's out there. The zoning board always, if there is a variance request, we go out and look at the site. We actually ask for permission, and apply, and we go out and see it. And then, sometimes when the minutes are done, for, I mean, I did 12 pages in the minutes, I've been secretary of the zoning board for a long time. That's what, I tell you, it took a long time. And sometimes before a meeting, we go, one, most recent variance, I brought in about six pages that I got off of the extension service site and tried to support the position I took on the variance. So, it's, it's like you're not really getting paid for those hours, nor do we expect it. I, I've always enjoyed being on the zoning board, never joined a body and got that pay. But to get it perspective, it's sometimes quite a lot of work. A hundred times half an hour for not the planning commission.
Yeah, the planning commission secretary puts, puts the agenda together, gets all the site plan, sends it out to, drops it off at all the members' houses. The planning commission needs a recording secretary. All they do is record minutes.
Don't say all. Don't say all, I think that's a lot. I was the recording secretary last year, and I would take the meetings, and I would go home, and I would listen to the meetings. It would take me six hours in terms of meeting them, I would do it 12, it's a long time.
What I'm saying is, we were chided about 20 years ago in Circuit Court. We were, went up here on evidentiary hearing, and the township wanted, well, we were chided by the Circuit Court judge, that we should have a dedicated recording secretary.
And that's why we have.
And so, the, the actual, when we do have recording secretary, you know, the secretary is more of an administrative putting together the agenda, collecting all the site material, getting it out, and assisting the chairman.
If you wanna see some interesting things, come to the planning commission hearing, or the zoning board hearing, if there's a variance request, and see what it's like. I think there was a planning commission, and I think that nobody told them $40 or $35, but.
So, the two of you who serve on these commissions, what is your suggestion?
I, I don't require a raise. I mean, somebody gives me it, maybe I'll work here, I don't know. But I don't require.
You'll pass your time, huh?
I don't pass my time.
But.
I mean.
Maybe that it's good to try to help us recruit members. I think that it's hard to get people to serve on these boards, because it's, it can be a lot of work, and, and they don't wanna do it. We'd love to have more people who are interested in doing that work.
I find it hard to believe that we've spent this much time on trying to justify five bucks a month for a position that's so many hours. Well, obviously, we have.
I need to know what's going on about that, and we're very public about it, so they have to defend their positions, and they can do it, it's true.
And my only recommendation for the planning.
Well. Just for the planning.
My recommendation for the planning commission is that we flock around with.
Shoot.
Believe that the CPA and that year's.
Yeah, I mean.
My question is, with the CPA and the commission, is it a little bit help us recruit?
I'm helping, I doubt.
We're in that situation where, at, at some of our ages, we think that we need a new generation of leadership. Come and learn about township and be there when we're not there. I'm not going, or I looked, and I got probably silver here, 20 years, but.
All right. So, real quick, the CPA is not gonna be pleased.
No, thank you. No, the secretary of the zoning board is, is me, and I do the minutes. And I do all the, I do all the work.
So, just for a little note, the, the.
Yeah, do it in a motion.
Okay, I make a motion. Okay, I make a motion to approve the pay raise as four oh eight. For the zoning board appeals, the chairman forty dollars, secretary fifty, and the members thirty-five dollars. Okay. And I also, okay, part of that motion, for the pay raise for the planning commission, have the chair at fifty dollars. The secretary at forty, and the members thirty-five dollars, and the recording secretary at fifty-five.
I'll support that.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Jennifer, for the pay raise for the planning commission and zoning board appeals. This will be a vote called.
Dan.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Jennifer, yes.
Both are yes, motion here.
I just want to say, we have a very, very excellent chairman, I think. He's, we're very fortunate to have him. Plus, we have some very young people on the planning mission right now that we've developed. I think the planning commission has had, since the last twenty years.
But we still want to have a recording secretary.
We need that. Any others, any papers here, we need a recording secretary.
And, yes.
I have to put that on the outside.
Yeah. There's one paper, that counts now. Okay. Next on our agenda, is an update from Vicki Wolf, her grant.
I did paths.
Yay!
So all these grants that were brought, I will look into them.
I, it was informative, a lot, it was a very basic classroom, so I need online. And it geared a lot towards more non-profit corporations and stuff like that. But I did get stuff out there, it did show me how to do a little researching, questions to ask, the type of, how to write the grant correctly. So that they look at it. So I did learn some stuff out there, hopefully I can use it for some of these things that I've drawn, so.
Well, you have to march through the broadcase and things.
Yes, it's on my list, I will start looking into it.
Okay. All right. Next on our agenda is for the B S and A building department.
Okay. We have looked into, due to getting our building department out of the nineteen century. More up to date, because we're on the rights, building permits by hand. People have to come in, and nowadays, a lot of, a lot of the builders and whatnot, through other communities, go on, there's paperwork on that to do it. So I contacted the S and A, since we have our tax and assessing stuff, we know. And I spoke with Steve over there, and he was explaining how it can all work. It'll be more streamlined. Right now, building department is very busy, and probably a little bit busier. So if we continue the way we're doing everything by hand, I will almost guarantee that we'll need to hire someone there to try to get to help. One of my friends, she works in a private company, deals with getting construction plans. And this is what they look like from online. They're not written, they're printed out. They can just, you know, apply for them, do for them. So, I threw it out there, you guys do what you want, but I, I mean, I really think we need to do something. What I can add.
You, you did the building department by yourself, when you were.
When everybody was out with COVID. It's overwhelming to learn. Patty wasn't going to help me, it's a lot to learn. I gave you even more credit than I ever gave you before, because it's a lot of paperwork, it's a lot of writing, it's a lot.
And I think, not to interrupt you, but I think it would help keep things more organized and not have this, where we have to go digging for files and try to find something that was, like, if we have someone call and say they need the site plan from this house that was built in nineteen ninety-five, we have to try to find it. So we're trying to find a ledger to see, okay, what the permit number was, what the, you know, what the name was, and what the address was. Whereas this would be all online, and go on it, you know, it keeps all the records in one place, you can pull it up, you know, probably what it needs, what inspections you need without having to go through, find a file, you know, develop history, all of them. And I need, you know, look up, assessing, so that, you know, we guys talk, yeah. So you can look and say, oh, yeah, permit was issued, the C R O was issued, you know.
And that can be able to cut it down, because I got a ton of calls from contractors when we were out.
Yeah, I thought I heard people do it, but that's, that's probably been an issue that could have been resolved by time. It's just our resistance to technology. We will always need a physical line.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Eventually, you will have to go and look for a file in a box.
Unless they did.
Well, we're going to have to see drawings, I mean, digitized drawings might be a thing of the future, but the way things are at this point in time, I don't think the digital site plans or building plans. This will probably cut the amount of paperwork, more than half.
Okay.
That was a clean cut, and sure we have.
What are the ongoing costs of this, of this particular patent, or the ongoing yearly costs?
I'm sorry.
What are the, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was just.
Your words.
No, no, that was, no, I was just conveying something.
What are the yearly costs to make payments?
It's right in here.
Yeah, I was looking for it, I can't, I'm not sure if it's there, but I'll.
It is a thousand dollars, thousand, one thousand fifty dollars.
Yeah. And you have someone to consult.
It's annual service, it's like what Colleen and Shalee and women have with the tax and assessing. If you have any questions, you can call anytime, updates.
I think, I think good.
I keep looking for this.
I think they wrote the program. I think they wrote the program. I'm just going.
I think.
I'm just moving that stuff.
My concern is the cost of the implement.
Would you come down with some of your.
No, I don't.
Can you share with us?
All right. I'm asking, is there backup support that's good, that's comfortable?
I've never used a B S and A, so I can't tell much.
I've never had.
Come down with a B S and A, walk me through.
Everything.
The county, the county requires B S and A.
I know that you, but I'm just asking. So when you call, they come, they call, they call me right back.
Right now, they're dealing with COVID, okay, so I have to leave my number. And I hope they call back Gasco County, but not Allegheny County, but we've got that straight. But they call back within fifteen minutes.
This is a graph, and actually, you guys should have got this, but you didn't. This is the response time for the building, financials, and I T. So everything is under fifteen minutes.
Okay, that's all.
I don't know, probably, I think this is long overdue, the device, the network, the six. Part of this, it's a good software, but you need payroll. But that's another issue. But I am concerned about how much is left off. I mean, they want eight hundred and fifty dollars a day, and somebody come in and feature about it. And they want thousands of dollars for analyzing customer processes, or, I don't know, maybe the data transfer.
That one, we will not.
Nineteen hundred bucks.
There, we will not have a data transfer, because we don't have any.
Oh, damn.
I get that, but this is, they, they don't know what we have, so that would not be.
Data transfer.
Yeah, we don't have.
So, you're saying they got to come in, upside down, and we don't know, we don't stick up. So this is, then.
It's not the end, no. And then also, if you look at it, the annual servicing, the first two years, the thousand fifty dollars, those are included right away. So that you don't have to pay the thousand fifty dollars.
I think that's cheap, actually, for that, but the overall cost, in terms of thousand dollars, look at some of the things they're going to do. You don't have teams that need training and certification, I know.
And also, it says for.
It's just a lot of charges for what looks to be a larger operation.
For the, for the training, it says that the days COVID are hazardous, they're not really going to action based. So, maybe it takes one day of training, for some places, maybe it takes two.
My suggestion is that if there's some aggressive pushback on the prices, I don't feel that's something to be worried about. It seems complicated. The way you describe this, for this COVID, for how to defend this size, with, our services in operation, we have days, but, but they may not.
I can answer for sure, that's.
There's a lot of process analysis that they offer for thousands of dollars, and I mean, you might need that, but I'm not sure. I'm not prejudging, it just seems, there's a lot of, there's a lot of. It seems complicated. The travel expense. And also.
We can ask, we can ask them to work in any, in the presentation, if you want to do that.
Yeah, I guess, they're all doing, they're all doing assessment on parcels.
Not parcels, no, parcels don't have, that's taxes.
This is building, this is building, this is one building, they're building.
Sorry, I guess, what are the basis prices, do they look at Gasco County?
I think this is a hard question.
Like she said, the data set up the conversion, that would be off.
They have to do the project schedule in accordance with the customer's existing processes and needs. Examining, analyzing customers' processes and needs, that may be something that we want to pay for, I mean, I don't know, but. It's just a, it's just a very, it's a impressive proposal, to do a lot of impressive things. I'm not sure we need all of those things, whatever you need, I have always supported.
Well, I have to say, maybe all of those things, when we were required by the county for tax and assessing, to, we had three years to get on board, the B S and A, believe we need, we dragged our feet. But, B S and A offers a host mortgage board of things that we could pay for, that I don't need. I, for instance, of course I need it for my tax program, and assessing needs it. But what I don't need are things like their high-priced personal property delinquent program. I have maybe in a given year, which is my, it continues to be my responsibility to collect personal property from businesses. I have that down to about two, that might be two months late in their payment. That does not justify a whole program for delinquent property, so I don't have that. I don't have a lot of their accounting programs. It just, it's too much. So it's tailored to fit my needs, and yet, the service, if I had a question, fifteen minutes.
I think they're a respectable company.
I think they are.
They're all a lot of different.
Yeah, yeah, but I think there's many layers, and perhaps if they, if they looked at our, our needs, we would get a better price tailored to those needs.
They'll probably quote you different things in a number of different ways, at different price points. And I think that you should get what you need. But we say, I don't think we should really just be cutting costs necessarily, we never have. But I'm just concerned about the proposals, there's a lot of.
Well, I can contact them, and I expect them to be better than quoting.
It's important, B S and A, as they did through treasurers, there was, up at the county, there was a training session. Because all of these, all of the treasurers at the time, we didn't have computers, we had big books like this that we wrote them. And so this was the first time for all of us. And so the county had us all up there, set up all the monitors, had them the S and A, programmed people in, and we learned the basics, and then we got the book. And you decide how intricate you want your tax program to be, and then you get support for whatever that program is. But the county set it up, the first time. Perhaps there is a community training session, that they wouldn't have to come in and do eight hundred and fifty dollars an hour to train somebody here. I don't know.
We'll see, we'll have to see what's available.
Yeah, no, I think it's.
It has to, it has to fit our needs, it's like, we don't have a planner that gives us plans that would suit downtown Rose Point Woods. You know, everything is, has to be tailored to fit Gasco County.
Right.
Well, the building department does not consume my six and a half hour work. I think, I am all for bringing this department up into the twenty-first century. But, some days I have built, other days, it is, it is a very job. That is not my only function, is the building.
Then, you know what we can do too, is instead of going with a new software, we can just move from writing things in letters and stuff, and move it all to Excel. So we could do stuff on Excel scratch sheets.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
It needs to be something more than writing.
No, I, and I.
And I agree with you a hundred percent, I don't know, you know, to say you're right.
I'm not sure you're going to move that, because a lot of people do that, with the dash, or something like that. Just that alone, we need to have.
But we need to have credit for it, and have, have the form, the building and stuff online, so people can do it online, and send her emails, so they don't have to.
I, I agree with you, I think, in price setting. But the price that if you interrupt here and explain tomorrow, like Dan said, maybe there's some area, they can look at our operation just before we put the money.
Right. And I'm just bringing this to kind of, yeah, let me.
What you started about doing the whole dollar X, that changes kind of the way you look at the headwinds. But I think if you know your own processes before you start talking to them, and then, so they don't have to come in and, you can, you can do what you want.
See, and I was talking to him regarding the financial stuff, because I work with him with that. He was like, talk to him, so she could tell him exactly what she needs to put.
Got you. All right. All right, so, do we want to just table it? Table it, tell them next month. Or longer?
Is that going to be longer too?
Longer.
It's a family one.
All right. Yeah.
If you can, you can do this in.
Act for it. Yeah, then probably. And him, try to.
There you go.
Do we want?
I'll make a motion to table approving the B S and A building department quote until the next meeting.
Awesome.
Okay, motion by Jennifer Anderson, supported by Joe Stevens, to table the B S and A quote until next month or the following month. Call and favor, vote by saying aye. By, 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 motion here. Okay, next on the agenda is the B S and A vote for a penny.
Okay, so, I gave you an updated quote, because I did contact Steve, because he did tell me there were a couple of the modules in there that weren't necessary to have now, and could possibly be added in at a later date if we needed them. So I did have him take out the cash received and the miscellaneous receivables. So you can see that brought down the cost quite a bit. Part of this is, if I would get on the B S and A software, calling the treasurer and clerks. Um, part of this is if I would get on the BSNA software, Colleen, the treasurer and clerk's, she could, instead of writing receipts out and giving that to me and me having to do it in the general ledger, it would automatically in the system go to, like, my general ledger or my accounts dealer or whatever. It, you know, it'll automate it. Um, it would make our, like, balancing our accounts much easier, right, Colleen?
I would think so.
So, I mean, we have Tyler Technologies now, which is a good company. Um, BSNA and Tyler Technologies started out the same, but BSNA has grown a lot, whereas Tyler Technologies has not. Looking through some of the old stuff that we're shredding, like since what, the nineties? I don't remember when you guys got it. It's the same reports. It's the same reports, same funds, every... So it's...
Then it's twenty-two or one.
And then, in the quote, again, the first two years of support are included. Their annual service fees are thirteen hundred and sixty-five dollars. Right now, we're paying Tyler Technologies three thousand twenty-five dollars per year.
You gotta, I'm sure we'll see that I do.
That's, that's for all of our purchases.
Service fee went up on the new quote. Service fee went up on the new quote, I got four hundred and sixty-five. Am I wrong, or...
Yeah, no. The big quote. It should say the date on it, it should say twenty-two on the front. Right here.
That's more, yeah.
Twenty-two, okay. So, so it's thirteen hundred and sixty-five dollars for the annual service fee. The first two years are included. So, is that... Oh, it's on page five of eight. So, right now, we're paying Tyler Technologies three thousand twenty-five dollars a year.
Play that for me.
That's six thousand dollars, because the first two years are included. So you almost have to take six thousand dollars off of the cost of that, you know what I mean? And again, we can have him come in and do a presentation, we can table this and have him do the same thing, you know? And he also did say, when I contacted him, that it's three payments.
Yeah.
And he said the third payment, we can push it to be paid after April first, twenty twenty-two, so in our next, this will be, so, yes, something about...
Yeah, so, yeah, so, travel, so, uh...
I, they're, they're way over there, they're in that.
Yeah, but that's just the size of Lansing, though, isn't it, you know, awesome?
I can put that in the house.
I mean, when I travel for, I'm, I'm just gonna ask.
Yeah, but what are they now charging? We only give fifty cents, they probably get a dollar, I don't know, whatever.
Well, I'm just saying, from my experience out of, as you're asking, I don't know, it could be for those three years.
Well, she can, we, only, we can ask her how much, but...
Yeah, I just, that's a lot of money.
Uh, and this is an estimate, if they're saying, okay, all right.
Do you wanna... Huh? Payroll included in that, yeah, yes, yeah. So, and there's stuff in there, again, that you can add, which we don't need.
Yeah.
Um, you know, doing tie sheets, you don't, you have nothing, you have a room, you know, and, yeah. So I can, I, I say we can do the list too, and then have them do a presentation for both.
I think that's something...
So I'll make this, can I just say, I make this motion at the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you know what other township papers like to do?
I do not.
Well, but other townships are running their, uh, water departments, their sewer departments, and things like that.
GSA?
Yeah. See, I can tell you that Columbus has BSNA for the building.
Yes, which, hi.
Yeah, uh, Jennifer, I expect.
Okay, all right. Motion by Jennifer spurred up by Joe Stevens to table BSNA coming for, um, general ledger, accounts payable and payroll until the next meeting or the following meeting, whichever we can get Steve to attend our meeting. Call a favor, by aye. Aye, by, by, motion here. Update on our park. First of all, Joe picked up our sign.
He did, he's a nice looking thing, sitting by the ride, it's covered up.
Okay, um...
I'm glad it's there and not in here.
I talked to Pam Lau, she said, probably we could talk to the guy, to Dick's, and see if there's somebody there that could put up our sign. Um, she also said that we could probably go ahead and maybe put up a gazebo. I think Miss Colleen that's been getting prices on gazebos.
Tell you what, take a, take a rundown, um, St. Clair Highway, cross over to St. Peter's Church. Look at the gazebo that Mark Uplegger built in back of St. Peter's. That thing could hold twelve picnic tables.
Oh, wow.
And it's, I mean, I, I, I can't even imagine, but I'll, I'll get up the nerve and I'll call him, ask his wife what that, what that cost. But, I, it's, it, the cement pad, it's gorgeous. And it's, just go down, just go down St. Clair.
Fresh, St. Peter's.
St. Peter's, Louis Bridge Church, and, oh, you know, yeah, by the Burger King, go over there. Look what they just built.
A mud built.
And, uh, steel roof, solid pillars. I mean, I talked to the man in Richmond who has that company with all the fancy, this and that and that. Lovely, lovely things. But that is, I mean, I mean, it, it's kind of a tremendous size. Well, it's just the size that is. It doesn't have a lot of bells and whistles with, you know, the fiberglass, this and the fancy roof and stuff. But it looks to be very functionable. And it's, and it's got the cement pad under, it, it looks very, very...
It's from, uh, a car from Jeff's, next to Jeff's Beach.
Oh, Jeff's.
Yeah, that's really, truly tough.
Yes, Jeff's.
It's in Mudville, for people that are around.
It's, it's, I mean, you know, they have a soccer pitch and things back there. But, and then I heard that was Mark Uplegger who built that. Well, Mark Uplegger built that township off, and I think he, I, I, I just, I haven't approached him yet, 'cause I know he's very, very busy. I can't, and I'm not a builder, so I can't even imagine what that would cost. But it's gotta cost less than something that comes pre-manufactured and set by someone else. And something like that, we might even be able to get, uh, community help in putting it up. It looks like something that we could do.
That's what I'm, I'm waiting for, where's the, where's the cookout and the potluck? And everybody brings the rice and stuff.
Exactly.
Pull this stuff out and have a party.
That's what I'm thinking. And then, like I say, we could fill it as time goes by with picnic tables. And then if we just had those little stand-in, um, grills.
Yeah.
I mean, we'd be in business.
Yeah, 'cause right now...
And then we could, then we could, um, think about talking to this man in Richmond about the playscapes that he has for children right next to that fabulous thing.
So, if you're gonna have like an outhouse kind of thing, is all these food trucks in the pot?
Well, yes, I, I, I'd much rather something better than an outhouse, but I'll, I'll be, I'll go there, you know?
We, we've discussed that with the planners, um, we have two options right now, um...
There's self-claim, huh?
Yeah, we have seasonal, we have a port-a-potty seasonal service, or else, more of a permanent one.
Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully our grant, we get our grant from the belt base, but now, for...
That's mostly just for the road and the gravel.
Anyway, take it, take a drive, it's, you know, you're going to Richmond anyway, just go that way and see.
In Ring City, there's a pavilion that...
Oh, that's the, yeah, the Cadoo's pavilion built that. They run that pavilion out. That's a, that's bells and whistles.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Yeah, it is.
But see, so if, if some of the parks can be offset by having it rented, like if there's a, like if there's a big section that can be rented, and then there's still a smaller section that doesn't have to be rented, I don't know. It's like, you know, if you pile up your family, go down there and go, whoop, the only place there is, and it's rented, and, you know?
Yeah, yeah, well, we haven't even got to that rental part.
But you know, that's so cool to have that as an option. Because when people have, I just had a baby shower for my daughter-in-law, and it's like, where? Everything was sold out, because of all their, you know, it's like, we wanted to be outside.
And, and East China rents their pavilion, uh, in the park.
Do they have electricity?
Hmm?
Will it have electricity?
Eventually, I mean, I...
Because if you're gonna have parties, you need...
Yeah, you know, that's where, and, and it'd be nice to have a fan going or something. Um, but anyway, just, just tell me if you think that building is too large for what we're considering. I, 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 I mean, you know, we're getting industry and everything else, and we might as well have a nice pavilion. But anyway, so we can put that sign up?
That'd be nice.
We can place the sign? Do we need to permit that sign?
We have to confirm that, that's the permit for the sign.
And, uh, yeah, they, what they can do, this, uh, next time company will have to, will make it that, is, uh, we'll show the sign up front. And they have deep stuff they can, um, can, what we call, can see your, my session, and, uh, we can stop.
Tell me, so, for the sign, like, not, but, the sign was for, like, January, yes, on the sign, in the right way. Pretty sure, you know, actual, uh...
Yeah, no, we, right, no, 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 we, we have that, and we find a part of that, doesn't it, for them, yeah.
For each time up to...
Yes, yeah, the grant, the grant, okay, we, yeah. Right, well, they have directional signs, we have the big signs in the ride, plus we'll have the smaller part of it.
I've met him, we get it done, what, first we have full permit, then we have to have the road commission tell us where, where it's not being road right-of-way. And then you have those levels and set, which the road crews would like to do that as well.
I, I don't know, I felt bad. If it's not in the right-of-way, it's none of their business. Yeah, so...
We'll have to pay somebody for it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure Nick decides, they know people.
Yeah, we'll hire somebody from there, well, let's get the permit first. Well, no, they have public permit, not us. The person that would do it, so, yeah, probably have to find somebody.
Well, call up Nick, see who they recommend.
Yeah.
Yeah, is the, is the sign, uh, the site plan, the location of the sign on the site plan?
Yeah, they have to have the site plan.
The only thing is, the sign is only facing, like...
Well, it has to be facing toward the road.
So, yeah, it'll be facing the north.
Yeah, it would, it would have to be facing towards the park.
Well, no, if it was...
They would like it to face, so we could see it from, yeah, so would I, that's what I was hoping for.
Yeah, no, I was thinking if it was rotated, was perpendicular to the pretty more highway, it'd have to be on both sides.
Yeah.
It's only got one side, though, because out, it's, uh, parallel with the road. Yeah, see, I'd see who they recommend they, with, uh, stuff, yeah, could you, I mean, all right.
Yeah, can we have something there, when the sign goes up? Because I, I'm collecting leads, and I get from people, you know, they're like, where? Oh, my gosh, I didn't know we had a park, and it's like, no, we're, we're establishing one, and I tell them where it is, and they're like, there's something there! And it's, we're getting there, but you know, it's, oh, the, and it's, I said, it's beautiful nature walk. I walked through there, it's beautiful, yeah, it's beautiful.
Okay.
But, all right.
That was cool.
Okay. All right. If you give somebody, if you want, well, I guess we'll have the coordinator, the general, okay? All right, next agenda is our farmer's market, or it's an entire delivery, if we need it, for the park. So, I think we have the idea of doing a farmer market and putting it up on the Facebook page, because a lot of people are interested, um, looking at it, so you want to be, uh, to be charged. So I guess we, back there, that it, we need the...
Are you guys, who's here for the farmer's market, anybody?
Well, it wasn't specifically the app, well, it's amazing, let's do it.
Okay.
It's possible.
You guys wanna be in charge?
We need someone to be in charge.
Huh!
Which would entail what?
Doesn't...
Well, we set it up, set it up, talk about just, you know, someone being here, yeah, we're out, when do you guys want to have it? I know everyone was gonna be here Saturday morning, like, whatever Saturday morning you want to do this. Why do you wanna start it? You know, do you guys want to set up from here or over here, or, yeah? I have a list, I can give you...
But you know what, there's other things too, there's plans, there's items, there's...
Well, I can bring whatever they want.
I have these, I have these, I should have talked to you.
What can I do here? In the perky, outside.
So will the tables be rented? Will it be rented space free?
No, they're private, it's for all their own stuff. It's free, it's, you know, the most, because of perky, okay?
We're just letting them use the, the perky ones.
Right.
Okay, like, set up back here, maybe...
Will we, will somebody be here to... Do they have to be a cash flow township resident?
They're gonna be preferred.
Do they have to be a cash flow township resident? Because all of a sudden, we might get, you know, and we're seeing competitors.
I'd say it's probably preferred if they need cash flow, especially if there's two people selling eggs and you have a cash flow person or non-cash flow person.
Exactly.
I'd rather a cash flow person.
And maybe that's where, when you start getting more interest, we'll get that. Anyway, I said, I have a list, so I didn't, I, I get real problems if that one's gonna be figured out and stuff.
We'll be all that's used to it.
Okay.
We'll build that, let's do it.
Um, and then we need to, to get some kind of waiver.
You probably should.
We should have a waiver, we should have it before, you know?
No, I think you should, just to, because people are so crazy.
Yeah, oh, I tripped over her chair.
I think you should get a waiver.
You wanna get a waiver?
You don't want somebody suing you, so...
All right, well, just to be on the same...
The farmer's gonna be, obviously, here, here, I work with my...
I know, so, yeah, I know, it's, yeah, I know, it's, yeah.
So, Steve? Would you get a waiver? Will it be for a, a, a year at a time, or is it per event?
We're gonna call our insurance.
Call, I'll call Steve.
Okay.
All right, I'm thinking twice a month.
Will we have every other weekend?
Yeah.
So, um, I know Carly Jane was, uh, interested, her attached, uh, with her family, family's property in Casco. She's a former resident, but I know she was really interested, and she has, but she has everything. She has a store, so I know she does.
Yes, don't lose it.
Stick to cash flow, yeah.
Yeah. Maybe, like, first, and then, well, more, two months, if there's not enough, then maybe we do that.
Yeah, if it is, that would be...
You know, I haven't been to the park, the new park, so I don't know even what it looks like. But what if, to introduce the park, what if the market was held there so that, you know, maybe not this year, but like, say, next year?
Well, that would be, that'd be, yeah, that's a door.
At least get people to go there and start utilizing.
That's right, that's a very, that's right, I agree.
Yeah, that's a great idea. So we need some level ground, some parking.
So, but do we wanna do, I have the orange, Danny.
What did you guys want?
Oh, orange, Steve. Four more, right about behind me, please.
I, do you have a... Well, if you've got a list, I mean, we can start... Today! What the heck? Not today, it's already, you know, it's not...
No, Danny.
Yeah, but, yeah, July. I mean, first, certainly not, fourth of July weekend, so maybe it's the second and the fourth.
Well, why don't we have, make sure Patty can title from her...
I'm gonna, um...
Yeah, and then, just another idea, maybe try, I know a lot of the other communities have farmer's markets. And if they have, um, maybe, do we do ours like on a pop week and another one?
Oh, St. Clair's is right in the middle, it's like Thursday.
In the middle of the...
The city's on Wednesday, and, you know, Sunday.
I was at the Green Cities, it's not every side over.
Green Cities is on Friday.
Green Cities is Friday.
Green cities is Friday, and Thursday, clear.
I think the Saturday, you know, start off with Saturdays?
Yeah.
To see how it goes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Second Saturday, July.
Second Saturday.
Oh, I can't.
My granddaughter's graduation at my house.
See?
Dennis in charge of the morning.
All right. Okay.
Um, we have to go down.
No. All right. Next, you had on your agenda, uh, substitute for planner, uh, planner Cass, and what do you have?
It was just something, something we threw out there, we just, when he was on the commission, or you bring it on up.
Yeah.
What do we do?
All right, he.
You, did you talk to him?
Yeah, I talked to him, yeah.
I did too. Yeah, he does have an associate, a woman, and he will give her, give us here. Is that what he said?
Yeah, and also, he, you can contact him.
Right, he said, not probably. Perfect, okay. Next, then, agenda is, um, replacement of the rubber treads for both basement staircases.
Oh, move, and also.
Motion by Go Stan. Supported by Stevens. For the replacement of the rubber treads on both basestairs with a cost of nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars of course and two, will be a roll call vote. Nine thirty-seven of four. Roll call vote.
Dan?
Yes.
Patty? Yes, Patty for yes, honey.
All votes are yeses, motion carries.
Yes, and there's some that are, well, they already written, written there. They were.
Okay, next, then, the agenda is approval of joint training for the ZPA and Planning Commission. This will be done by our planner, uh, Steve Cassett.
It's, it's part of his normal retainer to provide training. We're looking at the date, um, the applicant that was supposed to come to the planning commission submitted late, it's a large plan, um. Um, our planner, Steve Cassett, said he needs more time with it, so they didn't make the, the cutoff date, so they have to wait till July. The only thing we had on the agenda was to talk about our sign ordinance. It's not about makeup of the sign, the quality you can mention, and what you can put on it. All of our ordinances have to be content neutral. According to U.S. Supreme Court. You can put on it whatever you darn well want. Yeah, we can dictate the size of signs, quality of signs, the lighting of them, the placements of them, but we cannot dictate what is put on stuff. But, um, so what, what Steve did is, he took our current ordinances and showed where we're violating the Supreme Court rule. And he was coming before us with a new, um, with a revised ordinance, and they were very. But we decided to postpone that for July, so we could use next Tuesday as our joint training.
Oh, okay, I wondered where.
You wondered where that was coming from?
Yes, I did.
No, it just.
Lost me for a minute.
Well, I'm sorry about that, but the sign ordinance, even though it is, it's, it's going to be kind of, when it hits, you know, people are going to complain about what's on the sign, you know.
We'll have to approve the change.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm sorry if I went on, but yeah, joint training session for the Board of Appeals and the Planning Commission will take place exactly.
Have you notified all the ZPA before?
I just heard today, and I'm going to call tomorrow.
Oh, okay, good, all ready then.
We, actually, we don't need a motion on them, they just need to go ahead and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I just thought the sign.
Okay, all right.
It's always a nice sign, you may not like what it says, but it's.
Why wouldn't I like this?
No, what's that?
Like, if you have the vanity on it, it might, I guess, now, like, that.
We can come up with something, yeah, regularly, contact.
Okay, um, next on agenda, and you have this, um, this to adapt COVID-19 preparedness, maybe, if we now have.
When you can move to adapt the COVID-19 preparedness.
Yeah, so we can re-. Yeah, so, it's an absentee, we have to prove it in order to.
It's, it's, um, is there any, uh?
No, it's just right, or she.
God just said adapted.
We just have to approve this, and then we can open for public tomorrow. Yeah. It's about time, yeah.
Who's supported it?
I'll support it.
All right. Motion by colleagues, supported by Joe Stevens, a whole in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
We can take our sound.
All right, next on the agenda is improve the ZPA fee from two fifty to three fifty. Um, I went, and she see before you, I went to the different, um, township, China, Columbus, Niagara, all parts three fifty. So, I don't think I, I would have ordered for acting us to vote from two fifty to three fifty.
Now, the zoning board, um, is different than the Planning Commission? So, what did I just pay for recently for the shed? What did, what did I go before?
ZPA application fee.
Okay, so for three hundred and fifty dollars, I would think the people on that board should be able to think a little bit more for themselves. Instead of, because I was shot down, there was no way that I should have even been offered to come before the board. Because the answer was made before I even walked in, because nobody was going out of the ordinance. There, so why even have the appeal? Why even have it if the answer is no? It took two hundred and fifty dollars out of my pocket.
I can't tell you not to go?
No, but the board needs to be a little different and think for themselves. They, they go to classes and they get training, but if you have something in black and white, and no matter what, nothing is going to change it, then why even have the appeal?
Then people need not to go and do things before they come to the township and ask if they could. If Debbie, if you would have come before you put your shed up, you would have put it in the right place, and you wouldn't have had to go for it, right?
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
There, there's other.
You put it up without checking.
There was an existing building there that was not portable, the shed, obviously, is portable. You know, it wasn't for entertainment purposes, it wasn't for storage.
It had animal food in it.
It had animals in it.
Can't be the front of the house.
Yeah, I know, but you know what, it boiled down to be sixteen feet. So, I should have never, because nobody wanted to talk about it. One minute they'd say, oh, that's a very nice looking shed, that, that's fine, you know, she can't help it, the hundred-year-old barn is sitting there. That has always been a corral since nineteen seventy-four, for, for sure, I know that. It's always been a corral there, so that's where it was, that's where I've been living there now, almost twenty-two years, that's where it's always been. So, that was the only place.
You still put it up without, I mean, air to pull up.
Yes, that was my mistake.
Yeah.
But when you go to the board, and everything is explained out and hashed out, the bottom line was, nothing's going to change because it's written in black and white. Then there shouldn't be an appeal, they should all be able to talk amongst one another, like we did that night, and be a little more workable. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, what, what do you think they should not, let you stay?
Well, I, I think, yeah, I do, honestly, I do. I think the shed for sixteen feet, and for the purpose that it was there, for the purpose of the house, it's one of the oldest homes in Casco.
And then, anybody else that came along and.
But it had one twenty feet, and say, well, it's only twenty feet, and then you'd have the next person, well, mine's only twenty-five.
Well, it depends what their purpose is all about, but there's, there's different purposes.
I understand, I, I understand, I looked at the shed and all, all of that, and I wish I could have voted to keep, for you to keep it, but I couldn't. Because it would undermine ordinance for the future. And, and whenever we go to training, one of the main first points, the trainers say, we go almost every year, we get until COVID, to the, to the county. And they offer a big session for all kinds of people from the various, um, townships and counties. And they always say, normally what you do at a zoning board meeting is, unless there's some strong reasons, you have to turn it down, because you have to support the ordinance. The ordinance isn't always like we like it to be. I mean, the ordinance doesn't always permit things that we think are really reasonable when it comes to the zoning board. But you have to, you have to enforce and maintain your ordinance in order to keep things that might not be like yours, might be quite different, but kind of fall into the same, uh, you know, area. And that's why we, that's why we voted against doing that. The other reason was that, one of the things that people have a hard time understanding about the zoning ordinance and the Board of Appeals is, the problem has to do with the land. And it cannot be self-created, in other words, if you have a ravine, or a, or a lake, or, or a river, and your, or your property is kind of cleared, and you can't build your driveway where you normally want to, so you couldn't build a house. That's when you get an ordinance variation, not when it's something that was, and this is something, it's a sticking point, but. The self-created problem is exactly the kind of problem that we have, and it's not a, the jury, it's not against you, it's not a criticism, but you, or someone before you, made it impossible to put the shed maybe somewhere else. And even what people did to a property before you got it, those aren't viewed by the law, and from the extension service, as self-created hardship. It's not the land, it's not something you didn't control, or the previous owner didn't control. Previous owner builds a house, so you can't build a accessory building with your side garden, because it's too close, there's no room. That's a self-created hardship, even though you didn't build the house, you just bought it. It's a technical thing, but it's the way it is, and not always friendly to you.
Yeah.
You know, we don't always agree with the ordinance or the conclusion, um, we're just working to try to keep you having a nice township, that's.
I, I served, um, with Dan on the zoning board many years ago, an example of where it's connected with land, um, Mr. Zinkus, right here, on, on Melvin Road. He was going to place his home, and because of the county ditch ran on his property, he, he asked for relief, I think it was like ten feet closer to the road in a setback. Because he, he couldn't place his home, the square footage, to, um, mesh it in there, because of, again, due to setback from the county train as well. So, that was an example where the property, um, it was with the property that David set. Right.
Okay, well, just a mental note, that shed, that's two doors down from me, there's a storage shed in front of ours.
It's, I'm getting ready to send.
I know, and I don't want them to move it, honestly, but I just want to just, I just wanted to say.
We did send them a letter.
And I don't want them to have to move it.
You don't want me to send them another letter, but I have.
I'm just telling you, you know, that's the deal, so don't act like it don't never happen.
I know.
There's stuff that happens out.
It does, and if the ordinance think I can move it, we have sent a letter, and I'm about to send a second letter. We did send a letter, and I thought it was a.
And I would even like to say that, two of the people, two of my neighbors, one came in support, and the other one sent a letter, those people took time to do that. The other eight people that you guys sent it to, because I'm a corner lot, you know, they didn't obviously care, but here nor there. I just wanted to mention, if we're going up to three fifty, that we need to make sure that everybody plays fair. So, if there's an appeal process, sometimes we're going to have to think outside of the box a little bit, but to sit and say, three fifty, and every answer's no.
Every answer isn't no, though, I mean, we've given a lot of variations where there's real problem with the land, to locate something, driveway, or, or whatever, because the land doesn't permit to do it within the ordinance. It might be a couple of feet, you know, we also, the guidelines are, you give the least, uh, amount of variance, you know, in other words, somebody wants to do something that's twenty feet out of the ordinary. They can do it in ten feet, then they can, then that's what you allow them to do. So, it's not always easy, there's some of the decisions we make, we all, we would wish we hadn't made them, particularly for me, is when it requires me to tear down an old building. You know, I mean, a, a really, a problem, you know, that was there for a while, I don't like that, make this.
You know, come at it, you like, I'll make a motion, whatever you. I'm not going to go on, but it's, it's neither the public or office costs, the failure of the, and time that's involved in the office, I can pay for it, and we do need to do it.
I'll support it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I, I don't know, I just, I have three ayes. Motion carries. Oh, sorry.
I just, I don't know if we can substantiate.
All right, then, then we're going to start, then we can charge the applicants for the.
It's my impression that this was because there were administrative costs in the office, and well, copying and sending things out, and notifying people.
We don't charge for the.
Because all we can do is cover our costs, we can't make any money on it.
Correctly, and we don't, and we still want to make money.
I mean, what is the, the new rate of paying is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, and what we gave them for.
Yeah, that was about, it comes out to about twenty-three or twenty-five dollars total for each unit, right? Plus, there is a.
Twenty dollars for her and Linda, for this ZPA. And then for publication, fifty to seventy-five thousand.
I don't think we charge publication for the super unit, just.
Yes, ZPA has publication, we have to send it out. Yeah, actually, it should have been a roll call.
Cover all the costs, the township's not going to go broke on ZPA, so, it's not going to happen. And I don't like burdening, I know I voted for it, but my understanding was they just cover our costs.
And if it does, that's fine.
So, if it doesn't, we'll reduce it, I mean, if it does cover more, we should reduce it.
All right, so we get it in here. Okay, so we, I passed the roll call vote, three ayes, two nays, is that right? Two nays. Okay, update on the basement.
The basement is coming along fine, um, the guys have the floor done, it looks really good, the wall, they have walls up, um.
They're not here, no, they're.
No.
We're meeting here, we're. We're meeting here, we're meeting.
Yeah, it's quiet, so they can do a lot of the track over there. Yeah. That's where it was, uh, yeah, yeah. Look at the insult, it was, you do a lot of the, the red and blue, you know, the red. So they were having trouble with that. Turning through the base around. I think, yeah, they're talking about moving tomorrow. And then now that the trust, uh, they're holding the site, and I'm starting to help with it.
And then when I, they're gonna pay. Or, or handling, handling. Just, just the insurance.
Just, oh.
Yeah, we're charging them, yeah. Okay, all right. So it's concluded. Okay. Number C is to review and approve Mr. Moncay's, uh, project control review, uh... Of doing all drainage permits. Have you even talked to...
Yeah, I talked to, um, the county drainage committee, well, the deputy. And he was saying that any plan that falls within the drainage district, um, you have to review.
So...
All others, John, can you do?
And I think, Karen, this though, just, was, he was thinking that the people were gonna pay us, and then we were gonna pay him, and he said we didn't want to do that, was that discussed? Because it doesn't make sense for people to pay us, and then we have to send them a check.
Yeah, no, I thought we last meeting talked about it.
But was that because we were trying to ask?
No, I didn't talk about that.
All right, well, that's an easy one.
That's an easy one.
All right, so, well, just, that was Karen, that's two ayes. Yeah, that's an easy one. So...
I guess we have two years to go, and then any plan?
I will talk to both.
It's a permanent district, the county does all of their stuff.
Yeah. So Mr. Moncay is not going to review all plans, does keep by the law. Yeah. Oh, I knew, not really. We knew.
We could just have it as a discussion.
Right. Well, I just need to call. The motion that you made was for just the drainage plant, the county did not do.
Okay, so we're gonna...
The confusion that Pete and I had, when he was on that page and I was on the, the...
And John was representing a client, Bud Satan, a non-drainage district, John was representing, and I was just, we called.
I don't know, calling the health committee. Just so we are all in this thing, I think we have to.
Okay, so can you do contact Mr. Moncay?
Yeah. Let's go in for tomorrow. All right. Mr. Moncay's, I have an impression that he is, uh, he's doing all the drainage, he does... By, he won't be told that. That they can't put them together. And I will...
Well, the one, the, um, the gentleman up there said they are gonna do a cleaning way to follow the drainage, that seems like a precautionary. And especially, you know, we're going on debt, but then they want to be...
All right.
But he said, though, they worked with John a lot, and he said he done that.
Yeah, he does. All right, um, Joe, again, questions for John? Does there are no questions? And motion bills, okay. Motion by Kelly?
I'll support.
Supported by Joe Stevens, Kate Bills, Ruth Tom.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Is that a pretty yes, Kelly?
Yes. All, all, oh, sorry, yes, motion is. So some comments?
I'd like to thank Mary Jo, who messaged me for the effort, is a bottle cap, yeah.
And for, you on the farmer's market?
Yeah, same for the farmer's market, for us.
Yeah, I think I, I think I have enough for two benches now, but I need people that help me sort and weigh.
I have two garbage bags.
Thanks.
And I like them, I have more soon.
Awesome. We need to sort and weigh for the house or something. Where, where would you sort and weigh?
Uh, we could do high school volunteers, maybe community service.
Well, that's what I was thinking, NHS and, yeah.
No, I was gonna say, my mom found out this little trick of the info, and I didn't know, yeah. She, mom, they're taking bottles back to Neiman, over in St. Clair. You're not allowed to put their caps on, so they have a bag there, so my, my mom was kind of took it.
Oh.
But, so if anybody goes to Neiman's and they return bottles?
Oh. Because right now, Water to Go in Richmond, I collect, I get their caps. I'm going tomorrow, bring more boxes. So, you know, those, there, there is some labor involved, though. You have to take the, the steel out of the middle, and then if there's sticker paper on the top, you have to take it off. So I've had many volunteers, like this lovely lady, and several others, that they just sat down and was doing it, you know, have music on, or have whatever, and they done. Um, but the sorting, because, you know, I, I have, by signing on to do this, I guarantee that everything that we send is within their perimeter so that we don't damage one of the machines, because they're just dumping, right? So really, the liability's on me, and they said that I have to physically be watching every bag that's sorted. Somebody can't just take it home and say, all right, I'll, I'll bring it back to its room. So, you know, we're, we're to that point, though, which is cool, because honestly, I think I have enough for two benches right now. And now, like this lady behind me, who didn't even know it was me that was doing it, she goes, I'm just having fun collecting these labels, these caps. And I'm like, yay, girl. And I have gotten that comment from people, it's kind of like when you start recycling, once it becomes a habit, it's just part of what you do. And, you know, this is giving back to the community, so cool.
Yeah, um, Mary Jo, is it just plastic or even a metal cap?
No metal, absolutely no metal. So the caps, um, it's a huge list of caps, I mean, it's every cap and lid there is. Butter, cottage cheese, hairspray, um, toothpaste, tie. I'll post, I'll post it again, I, I posted it, but yeah, it's, yeah, no metal, though. So, yeah, my mother-in-law gave me a ton of insured caps, but they have metal on them. It's like metal and then the plastic? Like, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I look, I look like, I look like cappy hair, trying to pull out metals, that's what you want those.
Four ages always looking, when I, when I used to be a reader, and we were always looking for community stuff. So I went to, it's a Saint Peter County, the Anna Ture, and extension, kind of reach out to them, maybe.
That's fantastic.
Maybe call the schools, they did that for elections, a lot of the kids, we had some kids come out help. Um, I have their forms to fill out and everything, so I don't mind reaching out to that, too. I just have to figure out the time.
Okay. Because even boys have, girls have. You know, it could be a training session for, um, you know, environment awareness and recycling. So I give, teach the kids that part, and then they be a part of it.
Yeah, I've, I've had kids do community service up at St. Michael Cemetery in Richmond, they helped on the spring and fall.
Yeah. Yeah, it's really important, and I've worked with the kids before, and it's like, you know, you might be eight years old, but you can make a difference, and they feel so proud when they, you know, wow, you know, I made a difference. And that feeds them becoming an adult who values that, too.
I, I'm throwing this out here. What if we had a day, and we picked a day, and we invite high schoolers, four age, whatever, to come do these goods? I'll ship in, like, pizza, have, have like a little party, per se, but, yeah, maybe give them a little incentive to come up and do it.
That'd be awesome. So they do it here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would say probably the parking lot. Just because, you know, well, some, you know, yeah, some of the...
We can, we can hear for the bathroom. We happen to have some, we have a tent that are...
Oh.
They're not the best, well, they're not.
Yeah. We'll make sure it's on high wind day.
We got them for the elections, and they were not what we thought, but we got them with the grant, so, yeah.
But at least, yeah.
Dennis put them up, Dennis and my son put them up, and she put them down, so.
It'd be awesome.
They're probably at her house.
Probably depends how busy Patty has, Dennis, because he's still trying to, when it is created, the garden, the vegetation.
I know, for the, for the world.
Yeah, and you know that for my granddaughter's graduation in Kentucky, she drove down the day of, and drove home the morn, next morning, because his garden.
Oh, how old's her?
Oh, yes, never mind.
No comment.
Perfect example of how it feels, you know, when you know how it feels to be helping others, it becomes important and a part of your life. So there. So there.
Stick it up for her. You're speaking up, you're here.
Just that one thing, just that one thing.
Just that one thing, okay.
Why are you not pumping it up in the fall, so?
Yes, you do, yes, you do. That's the only thing we don't give to, I mean, you know, for the veterans, homeless veterans, doing the pump, pump. They're not, they're not, they're not. So, yeah, that's the only thing we do, so.
Okay, anything else?
Yep.
Okay, I mean, yeah.
Sorry. So, for this farmer's market, I'm thinking we need to have a banner. So if there's zoning issues or whatever, or where it's gonna flow up, we need to have a banner out here. And we need to have, like, the, the yard signs that are posted intermittently so that people know. So, you know, if I need to permit for that, or whatever. Okay. Second, when you call the attorney for the liability thingy? Um, ask them about the possibility of having livestock. Now, we haven't cows, but like, people have chickens, or baby ducks, and, you know, goats. And if they do have a chicken, or I mean, a, a cow, put a picture of it, and tell about it. I mean, I'm not saying, don't haul your cow down.
We got ducks for sale.
Yeah, but, you know, I mean, I would like the farmer's market to fit our community, which is very much farmers and agriculture, and, you know...
Well, I would have, you can have all those people with the trailer park. Now, I know when I was working at New Haven, at their farmer's market last year, there was a guy who sold tup, tuppers, that's right, in the trailer park.
Yes, there is, yeah.
So what I mean, they, uh...
No, I mean, I, I'd like it to be...
Everything.
Everything, but I don't know if the farmer's market currently that sells ducks and chickens. I don't need to...
Armaida. Raisin, armaida, there's...
Armaida Flea market.
Yeah, armaida is, yeah, yeah, armaida is.
But that's a big, that's a big...
Yeah. Anyway, just if that's any variance, I'll put that out.
Okay, uh, I just, I was just gonna give an update a little bit, I've been talking with Pauline about the broadband situation here, and... So, I'm not affiliated with anybody. I'm retired, you know, so...
And you're just the president.
Yeah. So what I have found, and I'll keep it, keep it concise, I've got a couple of copies, I'll leave here, and I can send it electronically tomorrow to you guys, and distribute however you want to use it. I have found, uh, ironically, and surprisingly to me, over this past weekend, there is, and I think it's the guy that he was, the gentleman that stood here for the thing with his firm, in the sacred, sacred township, there's a new, uh, service provider, Duke Broadband. This guy has filed on, using the CMIC, which is the Connected Michigan Communities, the two dot O grant, they got a one dot O, Armaida Township got three million dollars, uh, the one dot O, and they're building two gig down and two gig back up, and they gotta have it done by two thousand and twenty-four. So, this guy has filed, it looks like to me, two thousand addresses in his application, which are in Ira Township, Potr, Pot, Pot, thank you. Under Mill Township, East China, China, St. Clair Township, St. Clair City, or, I don't know, whatever you want, you know, St. Clair itself, and that, and there's someplace else, and I forget. He's only got one address in Casco, and it's someplace on twenty-six mile road, that I didn't bother to look up, there's just, just one. Also, apparently, he's a, a neighbor, he lives in Casco Township. He lives over on the east side of Palm somewhere, is where his residence is. His business is up on St. Clair, uh, outside of St. Clair, on, uh, East Range Road, I think it is.
What's his name?
Uh, I think his name is, last name is LaDuke, because it was Duke Broadband. I think his first name is David.
David LaDuke?
David LaDuke. I believe that.
May I?
He's, he's advertising on, and I, I, I put his information in here on one sheet, first. He's advertising fiber broadband to the homes, that's all he's doing, he's building no wireless, or so, so that the, the, the growth is there.
I'm told it's true, just before, um, the, the deer store is where his home, his mother and everybody live.
Really? Okay, could be, I don't know.
Oh, I know. I thought you said Moline City Highway.
No, 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 well, he's got one address that he's filed on for support, which is on, on Moline City Highway, that's in Casco Township. All the other places are like, all the way around us, in Columbus Township, which, which seems a little odd to me, too. I'd, I'd like to talk to him, just for my own personal edifications, why, especially if you're a, a neighbor, a resident of Casco, why, why aren't you filing on any of Casco, and why aren't you filing on Columbus? Or do you think, which he, which he, wouldn't think he would, he's in Casco, do you think that the presence of Frontier and Comcast?
Get a hold of him, I'm sure he'll help you.
So that's, that's what I was gonna look at, I was kind of surprised that they said that RISA was involved, but that's cool, and we can touch base with them, so, so that was my, just as a report, if, if you will, resurgitate, you know, type, type thing, and I'm...
We appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I, one of you, because you know, I, I live right up here, second house west of Melville. And, and ironically, that house became available to us in nineteen ninety-nine. My wife's parent passed away, and she was an only child, and she inherited all their stuff, so we sold her house in Westland, and sold her vehicles, and we used that to down payment. And this house was important at the time for three reasons. It was on a paved road. It has natural gas, and at the time, what was very important, was it was in the same school district. Never even considered, uh, you know...
A winner or not.
Internet, yeah. And when we got there then, after with my daughter, at the time, we needed some more stuff, and we were doing some dial-up, and I looked, and I said, oh, shoot, there's cable back here on the pole. We're gonna call Comcast. Well, that was twenty-one years ago, that we moved in over there. They haven't put that footprint any further. I, I think one of you I've spoken with, yeah, right, you, you lived just like two houses east of, and you ended up paying...
We didn't, we didn't pay anything.
They were, they were good enough.
But when we built our house, it was like, I'll just throw a number out there, because I don't know, say it was like nine thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And it's right across the street. And when we built the house, we had the cable buried underneath to the pole, so all they needed to do was bring it across the street, and it was like nine thousand dollars. So then, we said, no, now we're building a house, we gotta make cuts, and we were not doing it. Maybe five years later, we're like, maybe we should check into it. So we called again, it went up. Like, there it went. Another couple of years, we did, we called again, and what we did, they told us to call and ask for a feasibility. Supposedly, they sent someone out and do like a study, see how many people they can hook up, or whatever. Then it was like twenty thousand dollars. So, maybe five years ago, maybe seven years ago, I'm not sure. My husband happened to call and talk to the right person, he just found, you know, by accident. And he told the guy, he's like, you know, we're interested in this. And he's like, oh, and he's like, yeah, and he's like, you can do it for like three hundred and fifty dollars. So, and then, then my husband goes, well, he's like, my in-laws live right next door, and maybe interested, too, he's like, hold on. So he goes, well, if it's to you, it'll just break, so we didn't wind up paying anything. But the story was, it was, you know, it went way up, and then...
I guess my point is that in the twenty-one years, they haven't done what?
They haven't done, no. I'm like, you guys, no.
We came from Richard Township, that low plank and thirty-three mile road. When we moved there in ninety-two, the, the township folks, they told me, don't worry, we gave an exclusive franchise to Comcast in nineteen ninety, so that was two years prior. They got to ninety-five or ninety-seven, or five or six, and they're gonna have every road in the, in the township.
Yeah, that's what we thought.
There's still no service out there today.
Right? Right? I think he just lucked out, talking to the right person.
My, my thinking and feeling is, is that I don't think we can count on AT&amp;T, or, or Comcast, or maybe even Horizon. We, we need to look at these grassroots folks. Up in the thumb, Higgin Telephone, which is now Agribally, there's, there's about fifty-two hundred miles of fiber that's been plowed in the upper thumb, so, Huron County, Stanley County, Pasola County. The, uh, Agribally has plowed twelve hundred miles of it themselves on their own dime. They haven't got any federal money, they go into the bank, got them, they've got, they've got fiber to every building in a pack, little tiny pack, there's nothing there. But, but there's a fiber pad between every dwelling, so if you wanna call them for a hundred and fifty bucks, they'll put the drop in, that's a one-time chart. You put the ONT, the optical network terminal, on the side of the house, or the dwelling, and boom, you got service. So, a lot of stuff is happening, there's, there's a lot of things that are, that are going on. I, I think that we could do, or look to possibly do, maybe with the...